Good evening, welcome to the, what is the day today? Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, City Council meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, Claire?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
All City Council members are present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, additions or deletions?
There are no changes, additions, or deletions, of which I'm aware.
Thank you. And next up is Assistant City Attorney, oath of office. And Judge Brown?
Okay, Council, thank you very much. This doesn't need any introduction. You all know Rachel. Rachel, if you'll come up here, please. And I don't know if you want us in any particular area, but I know we have an interested party there who might be taking a, let's go over here.
Well, can we do it by the city logo there, please?
Let's do that. And let's have you, yeah, face like that, be all right? All right, well, as most of you know, all the Council knows, of course, Rachel has been employed as an Assistant City Attorney for a good while now, and she regularly appears in court, so I've had the pleasure of knowing her over the last several months. And she now is admitted to the Colorado Bar Association. And the last formality is the oath of office, which we have, and this was tailored individually for Rachel, by Rachel, so we're going to do this. She has her copy, and I have mine, and we're going to do the oath of office now, or oath of admission. If you raise your right hand. I, Rachel Allen.
I, Rachel Allen.
Do solemnly swear for...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
I will maintain the respect due to courts.
I will maintain the respect due to courts.
And judicial officers.
And judicial officers.
I like that one, Rachel Allen. I will employ such means.
I will employ such means.
As are consistent with truth and honor.
As are consistent with truth and honor.
I will treat all persons whom I encounter.
I will treat all persons whom I encounter.
Through my practice of law.
Through my practice of law.
With fairness, courtesy, respect, and honesty.
With fairness, courtesy, respect, and honesty.
I will use my knowledge of the law.
I will use my knowledge of the law.
For the betterment of society.
For the betterment of society.
And the improvement of the legal system.
And the improvement of the legal system.
I will never reject.
I will never reject.
From any consideration personal to myself.
From any consideration personal to myself.
The cause of the defenseless or oppressed.
The cause of the defenseless or oppressed.
I will at all times faithfully and diligently.
I will at all times faithfully and diligently.
Adhere to the Colorado rules of professional conduct.
Adhere to the Colorado rules of professional conduct.
We put the court seal on it, so Rachel, if you would come over here, maybe, and sign this. And I'm going to leave that with you, because I know it has to go to the Office of Attorney Registration, and there's a copy for you, so congratulations and thank you for being a part of our community.
Thank you.
Then, Mr. Mayor, the court clerk has to give her the oath of office now. Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
And now the oath of office, please.
Please raise your right hand. I, Rachel Allen.
I, Rachel Allen.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
And bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The State of Colorado.
The State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Assistant City Attorney.
Discharge the duties of the Assistant City Attorney.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you. And is there anyone that would like to address Council on any matters or issues that are not on tonight's agenda? Scott, let me read the call for public comment. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Individuals wishing to speak will be recognized by the Chair, invited to the podium, asked to state their name and address, and will be allowed three minutes to speak. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the Council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the City and its operation. Please be aware that neither the City Council nor City staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. If an individual disregards these rules, they will be asked to leave the Council chambers. Scott?
I promise I won't make this a habit. In the wintertime, I'll certainly need to take a vacation. As a follow-up from yesterday's work session, I first off wanted to thank Councilmember Files for discussing the topic of exempting groceries from city sales tax. I appreciate that myself, and I know there's many others that do, along with Council and City Manager Bell having a further discussion on the topic and proposing a follow-up meeting on January 20th. Thank you. This consideration is very meaningful to many families in the Montrose community. One small clarification from yesterday's work session. Mr. Bell had used a term, the group, when describing the same conversation being presented to the Board of Commissioners. I just wanted to clarify that and mention I did that as an individual. One of the points of the work session, the councilors and city administration discussed the type of forum for January the 20th, and I know there's various types of forums for a public meeting. I just wanted to make the comment that when you make that decision, to please consider a format that is full group in nature, where everyone can exchange ideas, discuss impacts, and have opinions in a collective, together manner. I recommend against any public meeting that breaks people into groups, and I certainly would recommend against an open house style, because I think we saw with the C dot U S 50, open house, that was pretty much a disaster. You had over 100 people show up to go through Q and A, and there was no format. So let's take our time to do this the right way in a candid nature and make it productive. Again, I wanted to thank Council and administration for your consideration in the effort to exempt groceries from local sales tax. If we can get there, I think it would be a great collective win. It all adds up. Like the great news I heard from Mr. Bell and the Dan Show on Monday, that Maverick's coming to town. And I think we know competition in a town where too much fuel is controlled by too small of a group, that new competition is great. That's a win. And then maybe Maverick will offer a few supercharging stations. Overall, my closing remarks are to say, I certainly think we can work together to create and maintain a nice balance of city essentials, amenities, and opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address Council? Scott? Another Scott.
Don't confuse me with this Scott.
What's that?
Oh.
Scott, name an address, please. I think I forgot to ask Scott, the other Scott that.
The other Scott, okay.
We've got it on tape somewhere.
Oh, it's, yeah. Scott Reeb, 16246-5790, Trail, Montrose, 81403. Good evening, and it's my understanding, I did not attend the work session yesterday, but I've heard through various reports that the concept of changing the city charter to do away with council districts was pretty much defeated, if that's my understanding. Is that correct?
I wouldn't use the word defeated. There's no reason to discuss it anymore.
Okay, you're not moving forward with it, from what I'm understanding. And I also was understanding that, Dave, you had said that if it had moved forward, you'd actively campaign against it. If I understood the transcription, if you will, of what took place at the work session, I wanted to congratulate and thank the four councilors who voted to defeat that, or at least table it for now.
We did not vote, and we did not vote to defeat it.
Okay. It's no longer on the ballot, then, is that correct?
It was never on the ballot.
It's no...
We had a discussion, and we've moved on.
Okay, well, that's, I guess, the downfall of secondhand information, but it was being proposed for a change of the city charter, as I understand it, and it's no longer being proposed as a change to the city charter. I guess that's where I'm heading. And it was my understanding through conversation that the majority of the councilors chose to not move forward with it on the ballot as a charter change. Is that an accurate description? Okay, then, let me say my thanks to the councilors who voted to not move forward with it. We have a representative form of government in this country, in this state, and we should have a representative form in this city that is based off of districts and not just an at-large group of councilors that are supposed to represent everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. I guess, I just want to, we do not vote on things at the work session. We discuss them, and we find a direction to move, which is exactly what we did with the issue around electors.
And I think that, I think the decision to not move forward was unanimous.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Number seven, approval of minutes. City Council consideration of the minutes of December 17th, 2019, special City Council meeting and December 17, 2019, regular City Council meeting. And I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th, 2019, special City Council meeting and the December 17th, 2019, regular City Council meeting as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes, and Doug Glassbell, who was not at that meeting, has abstained. Thank you. And number eight, designation of official posting location. City Council consideration of the designation of the City of Montrose website, www.cityofmontrose.org, as the official posting location for meeting notices within the bulletin boards in the lo, with the, let me try that again. www.cityofmontrose.org as the official posting location for the meeting notices with the bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall and outside City Hall as secondary locations for use in extingent, exigent, or emergency circumstances. And with that, Lisa?
Mayor Bowman, this is essentially a housekeeping issue. At the first meeting of every year, the Council designates our official posting place. There was a change in legislation this year where if we post our agendas on the City of Montrose website, that's considered adequate notice, as long as it's 24 hours in advance, and then we do post a secondary location. But I would like to point out that we are not going to do anything different. Our agendas will be posted as they always were.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion?
I think it's great and transparent that despite the fact the law says we can just post it online, that we're going to continue to post it in two locations. I know people stop and look at those, and I think it's a great way to make sure people are informed about what we're doing.
Great.
Three locations.
Including the website.
Yeah. But it's nice that it's both inside and outside, so if City Hall's closed on a particular day, they can still see it and read it, so.
Any more discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to designate the City of Montrose website as official posting location for meeting notices with the bulletin boards in the lobby of City Hall and outside of City Hall as secondary locations.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number nine, funding request. City Council consideration of request for additional funding for the Montrose Economic Development Corporation. And I can accept public comment on this.
I'm Sandy Head, Executive Director for Montrose Economic Development Corporation. Just want to reiterate the fact that we are very pleased with the consideration of Council to grant us additional funding. In the last several years, our relationship with City Council has been greatly improved, and I do compliment councilors and staff for that. We have a great working relationship, and we work quite extensively with Chelsea Rostie on prospects, and we have a number of benefits within our organization. Both City Manager sits on our board as well as Chosen Counselor. Mayor Bowman is our current representative. But, you know, we work with, as we work with our prospects, what we offer is that go-between, between government and companies. Sometimes they're not comfortable coming and talking directly to government, so we work as a liaison. We're also the contact with the State of Colorado for the economic development arm of Montrose. Our staff, Patricia Cummings, keeps up our website, and she has all the latest demographics for the community on the web portal. We do that, as well as maintain our investor base. We have 10 active prospects, one which have, we have been working with since 2015. I spoke to them today, and they actually believe that 2020 will be the year they actually can start up here and grow. So we do, we're able to, because we're not, our plate isn't that large, that we can keep ongoing contact with prospects regardless of how many years it takes to bring them to fruition. So I'm here in the event you have any questions you would like to ask.
Thanks. Any questions for Sandy from Council?
I'll just comment. I, too, am glad to see a good cooperative relationship between MEDC and the City, and appreciate your part in that relationship.
Thank you for your part as well.
Any other questions for Sandy? Any questions, comments in general? Okay, I believe the amount that we discussed was an additional $10,000 for MEDC. Claire, any comments you'd like to make on funding MEDC? No? Any other comments?
Am I correct? That's $10,000 in addition to the money that we were already allowing for expenses?
Currently, Council has pledged $5,000 annually, so this would increase it by 10 for a total of 15. Thank you.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to provide additional funding to a total of $15,000 to MEDC, which is the $5,000 we've done, that's currently in the budget, plus an additional 10.
Merry Christmas.
Well, Merry Christmas. And a side note, which I should have mentioned, is there was a request from Council for us to adjust our meeting date, because it conflicted with yours. Although we've been meeting on Tuesdays for over 30 years, we did vote to move our meeting to Wednesday, so it will no longer conflict with Council, and you'll be able to enjoy the entire meeting. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy. That's really appreciated. Thank you.
We were happy to do it. We appreciate your support.
Again, I think the continued effort of the City, the County, MEDC, private individuals to make this community better, as we all work together, our community just rises up. So thank you very much for your work. Number 10. I'm still flashing. Lisa, we're still...
Our vote hasn't been tallied.
And number 10, police department vehicle purchase recommendation. City Council consideration of the purchase of a 2020 Ford Transit van from Montrose Ford for the total purchase price of $47,311. And Police Chief Hall and Jim Scheid, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, tonight, we do come before you and request the approval of this 2024 Transit van. With the increased amount of hiring that the police department will be doing in the next few years, 14 police officers at least, we use the Western Colorado Peace Officers Association Academy in Grand Junction. And with the increased number of hiring, we need a vehicle that we can transport cadets back and forth from Montrose to Grand Junction so that they can attend the academy if we hire them as a non-certified officer. And so that means that they should not be driving an emergency vehicle. And so we sent out an RFP, and Montrose Ford was the only local dealership that responded and offered this 2024 Transit van. This vehicle will also be used for other purposes within the city, to include giving tours at times for new residents, and then also for other police operations. We can transport police personnel, SWAT members, to other cities at times when we're called upon, so. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer them.
Questions?
One of the questions, one of the questions that I have.
But you voted yes.
One of the questions that I do have, in some cases, we've bought vehicles through a state contract that gives us a little better price. Were we given any opportunities, or did you guys look at that?
Jim, you want to?
I'll answer that a little bit better. So we issued an RFP, which would open it to any dealer in the state or anywhere can bid on that. And oftentimes, for larger orders, we do see dealers from Front Range or even out of state bid on our packages here, but if it's one vehicle at a time, we often won't attract those that have been awarded a state bid. So we, in this case, anybody local was more than welcome to bid, and the RFP was very broad, which allowed anything over seven-passenger van to be proposed as part of the RFP, and we only received bids from Montrose Ford.
And so, Chief, I was wondering the difference between the two vehicles that are in the bid here and the capabilities of the one that we chose over...
Yeah, we should discuss that. That's a good question. So we were also looking at a Ford Transit Connect van, which is about half the price. The difference was that it's a two-wheel-drive vehicle, and the van, the Ford Transit van that we were looking at was 12-passenger van. This one would be a seven-passenger van. And being two-wheel-drive, going back and forth between Montrose and Grand Junction versus the Ford Transit van, which is all-wheel-drive, it was just a safety factor as far as snow and weather conditions and things like that. And then we're able to transport more people and equipment.
Okay, thank you.
And just a quick note, too, the funding for purchasing this van will come out of the capital fund.
I'd like to tell you that I think it's important that you have here, even in your presentation, that the van will be available for more than just the police department, because I know in my eight years, we've used my personal van a few times to take city trips because it's the only one we could get more than five people in.
Sure. Yep, no, it's, we'll be able to use it for other purposes as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Council? Claire, anything you'd like to add? Do you want to drive it, or?
Just listen.
I can take comments from the public. Any comments from the public on this purchase? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2024 Ford Transit van from Montrose Ford for the total purchase price of $47,311. Sorry, I shorted you a dollar.
I'll second that motion.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number 11, City Council consideration of the purchase of a Peterbilt refuse truck with a LeBree service body from Ferris Machine of Grand Junction for the total purchase price of $284,770. Jim Scheid, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So you have raised a purchase recommendation for our next trash truck or refuse truck. There's been no changes from where we talked about this at work session, but to recap a few of our points, we had an RFP out for this also towards the end of 2019. Two of the bids that we received did meet the minimum qualifications, and we're suggesting the lower of the two bids of the 284 versus 287, because that actually also matches with the other recently purchased trash truck, which is the same brand, same body, so obviously trying to standardize and keeping the same throughout our fleet is important. And we've worked with Ferris Machinery on several purchases and pieces of equipment, our vectors, our sweepers, other trash trucks that we've purchased through Ferris, and they've done a very good job. We have no issues at all with them, and they definitely keep us as a priority if we have any issues, so they're very good to work with, have no complaints. So definitely recommending the Peterbilt with LeBree body from Ferris Machinery.
Any questions?
We talked about this extensively in work session, but can you remind me the delivery of this particular truck and the other truck that we already have ordered? Like, they're both coming, when?
So, yes, this truck would be ordered soon, you know, this week, and it most likely would arrive in midsummer, July, probably. But the truck that we talked a lot about was the truck we ordered last year, or in 2019. And we had, we had ordered it with a different body type on it. It was not a LeBree. That, we've had a lot of issues through the year, and we're not able to get that body, so we changed it to a LeBree body late in the year. And actually, we've been talking with Ferris Machinery on that truck also recently, and we should receive that truck in February, so very soon, which is, which is great. They really helped us out in that situation a lot, where we may have gone a whole 'nother year before we received that truck. And Ferris really helped us out and made that happen by swapping our truck over. We had the Peterbilt chassis already, but did not have the body put on it yet, and by making that change to LeBree and Ferris kind of helping that transition, we should receive the truck ordered in 2019 next month.
And which one is a replacement of a currently outgoing model, and which one is a new one that will allow us to change our pickup schedule?
The one that we are speaking about today that will be ordered soon is a replacement truck.
Okay.
So will not add to the fleet. The one that we should receive next month, February, will be an additional truck. So that, yeah, the truck we receive here soon should help supplement the routes that we are currently running.
Will our citizens' routes stay the same, and their trash pickups stay the same? It's just going to supplement how, like, that we're able to get them picked up before dark, or?
Yep, that's right. So the routes will not change for now. We will be able to use this additional truck to help supplement those routes and make sure we can get to the landfill before it closes.
Okay.
But routes won't change for now. With more growth and more pickups, more cans on each route, in the future, we may need to add a route, which would change them, but not for the... not for the next year.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important to note that this came in under budget, too.
That's right.
So, thanks, Jim.
Any other council comments? Claire? Sure you are.
You need a special driver. Do you need a CDL to drive a refuse truck?
That's right. Class B.
So, but Claire, it's great to do a ride-along. Seriously, it's great to do a ride-along in a trash truck.
We're talking about different types of ride-alongs.
Thank you. I can take public comment on this. Anybody from the audience want to talk about trash trucks? No.
No.
All righty then. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the purchase of a Peterbilt refuse truck with a Labrie service body from Ferris Machinery for the total purchase price of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second it. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Onto staff reports. CUP eighteen dash zero three-five-nine, de novo hearing summary. Mr. Gary Baker, please.
Hi. Gary Baker with Planning Services Department. Just wanted to update you on this upcoming de novo hearing for an RV park at the Elks Lodge. On December eleventh of last year, the planning commission considered the conditional use permit as well as a permit for the RV park, and they recommended approval for the RV park permit. And so, at that meeting, the RV park permit was announced that it would be at city council tonight. In the interim, five days after, within five days after that December eleventh meeting, the city received an appeal request, which is called a de novo under our code, that automatically generated or created a new rescheduling of the conditional use permit and also the RV park permit. They sound very similar, but they're different. So, I think in essence, what it amounts to is that you won't be hearing the RV park permit tonight. You will be undertaking a de novo hearing for the conditional use permit on January twenty-first. So, just wanted to make sure we're covered, covering our due process requirements. And a notice went out for this de novo request. Letters went out, signs been posted, ad in the newspaper. And I believe it was very effective because we had around sixty participants at the meeting on December eleventh. And I don't believe anyone here tonight has an interest in that item. So, sounds like we covered our bases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chelsea Rusty, 2019 DART summary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Excited to talk about how things went for DART in 2019. We talked about this at a work session, but thought it might be great to discuss it here in a city council meeting and just run through a little bit about what DART is and then how we got, what we did in 2019. So, what is Montrose DART? It's the Montrose Development and Revitalization Team. So, again, this is sort of, it's not sort of, it is a national Main Street program that's an affiliate of the Colorado Main Street Program. And so, it's an economic development tool that many communities across the United States have used and has proven to be one of the most effective economic development tools in this country. So, why do we have DART? Again, there is a national organization called Main Street America that houses all of the state subsidiaries, which is Colorado Main Street in our case, which is housed under DOLA or the Department of Local Affairs. So, we are a designated community under Colorado Main Street and we have self-titled DART. So, again, here in Montrose, we wanted to ensure that our Main Street program wasn't just for Main Street that because it's a city organization that we are able to service the entire community, sort of build the wheel within the downtown and then roll it out to the rest of the business districts and portions of our community that are just as important as the downtown while also realizing that downtown is the heart of the community. And in order to survive, we have to have that vibrant, beating heart. So, how do we do this here in Montrose? The vision of where we're going for DART is that we support developing Montrose as an attractive, vibrant place where people converge, businesses thrive, and values rise. And we're going to do that by implementing the benefits of the Main Street Program. And so, there's some different pillars that support the Main Street Program that are nationwide, that everybody follows, and we do the same here in Montrose and have been seeing a lot of success. Quickly, we'll go through those four pillars and then jump right into the report. So, we have the first pillar of organization. So, that's how we're organized. The governing body of DART, we have a DART board. We have bylaws that you've all approved. And then we have the committee that organizes how we put our committees together and what drives us forward with our strategic plan. We have a promotion as a pillar. And so, that's getting people into the places, to ring the cash registers, to make sure that people are coming out for events and that type of thing to get our economy vibrant. Then we have economic vitality. That's the traditional economic development arm. So, making sure businesses are thriving, making sure that we're able to partner with them to make great things happen. And then finally, design, the look and feel of the place, the ambiance of the downtown and other parts of the community and how that looks. And so, you put all of those together with some transformation-type strategies and you get what we're trying to do with DART and what other organizations across the country are doing as well and seeing great success. I'm going to just, we have two strategies for our, for DART. So, we have twelve by twelve. Again, that's trying to get businesses to stay open twelve hours a day, twelve months a year. We have three hundred-plus days of sunshine in Montrose. There's no reason why we should consider ourselves a seasonal community. We're not. We're a year-round community and we want to keep pushing that out. Second, we want to focus on the history. So, historic preservation, that is a huge cornerstone to any Main Street Program, ensuring that when you look at Montrose, it feels like Montrose and that we preserve that history into the future. So, quickly running through what 2019 looked like for DART. We were able to receive fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars in straight grant money from the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs under the Main Street Program. Really, as being a designated community, we're promised only about seventy-five hundred, a little less than that each year. But because of the great things that you all have supported and this community has supported, DOLA further invested in us to do things like our Opportunity Zone prospectus, our Opportunity Zone video, the new pole banners that are downtown, some umbrellas in Demarat Park, and then the really great umbrellas and tables at Centennial Plaza and some additional training for our staff. So, that was really great. We had eleven new businesses just within the downtown district. We don't track every single new business just yet that comes to Montrose, but eleven new in 2019 in downtown. We did five ribbon cuttings, sort of just getting that program off and running. And again, just so the public knows, DART offers free ribbon cuttings and we will help organize the event. So, if you have a business opening, reopening, sort of reorganizing, we're happy to come out and promote that. We estimate two thousand or more people come, came into the downtown as a thanks to DART. And that comes through DART-sponsored programs like the Acoustic Tuesdays that Mayor Bowman volunteers at, along with the support from Colorado Boy and some others, and our great event staff here at the city. We did a Welcome Hunters Promotion, which we felt like was really successful and was a lot of fun. You know, our annual holiday event, Small Business Saturday Celebration, and two block parties that were hosted here at the Visitor Center. We had thirty Main Street banners hung, which is just a great testament to all of the other wonderful events that are happening in this community that we're fortunate enough to promote for our partners. We did twelve spotlight videos on businesses in the downtown and they received over twenty thousand views. And then we had a lot of really great quick win projects, some that I've already discussed, but many people might have noticed the repainted planters on Main Street with really great flowers in them, the Hartman clock being reinstalled in Centennial Plaza, and the great piano down on Main Street, just to name a couple. We were awarded the Governor's Award for the Best Adaptive Reuse or Rehabilitation for Storm King Distillery. So, that was a great honor for us, along with our URA being awarded an award, which wasn't part of DART, but just thought I might throw that in there. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys have done a great job. Thank you very much. Any other comments from council? Just to... All righty. Mr. Bell, then. Anybody?
Did he say no?
Yes.
Was he supposed to say something?
Well, giving me looks like you have something in mind I should talk about. Ask me any question you'd like and I can answer, but I didn't have any presentation planned.
Somebody needs to talk about Christmas trees.
Yeah.
Mr. Scheid was going to do that when it got around to him, I believe.
I'll talk about Christmas trees because I brought it up at work session. It is that time of year when public works will come and take your Christmas tree off of your front curb. They ask that you make sure that it doesn't have any decorations on it, any tinsel, any lights, and that if your trash is picked up in an alley, don't put your Christmas tree in the alley. Put your Christmas tree out front. There's no scheduled time. They will drive around and pick them up as they see them for the month of January. Is that right?
That's right. And one interesting part of that is that we grind them all up, we chip them. And so, if anybody would like chips of Christmas trees, come on by and we'll load you up.
Anytime or is that a Monday through Tuesday? I mean, a Monday through Thursday?
Well, yeah, Monday through Thursday, nine to three is best. And since we have so many Christmas trees coming in, pretty much every day is good. After January thirty-first, it'll be, they'll be dwindling. We will end up shipping them out unless we give them away.
And I got a little confused. You don't want to put the Christmas tree next to your trash barrel, which is going to be picked up today, for example.
That's right. So, as long as you understand that it's two separate crews that pick it up. So, the trash truck is not the one taking your Christmas tree. So, if your trash can is in an alleyway, we don't want the Christmas trees in the alleys. We'd rather them be out on the curb, on the street side. If your trash can is also on the street side, just don't lean it up against your trash can because we can't pick it up with the Christmas tree on it.
Don't put it in, don't put it on top.
Don't put it in the trash can, don't put it on top of it, just separate it.
Perfect. Ann, you look like maybe you have something to say?
I think I'd like to just reiterate that we are having a meeting on Monday, the twentieth of January. Per your direction yesterday, that'll be at six-thirty PM here in the council chambers is the room that's available, and we think it'll work well for that meeting. And the city will be posting a packet of information in advance of the meeting next week so that people can review the information that we have at the city, some past information about this topic, and then come to the meeting prepared, if you'd like to, with that information and know some of the things that we'll discuss. So, soon this week, we'll be putting information out on social media and on our city website. You'll see ads in the paper. So, we're getting on that quickly. And then just again, next week, we'll include a link to those materials when we have them so that if people see it on social media, they can just link to the packet of materials.
And that meeting is to discuss sales tax and its impact on food sales?
Yes. So, we'll be discussing the impacts of eliminating sales tax on groceries.
All right.
And that's both the impact on the city and on the county.
Yes. We've reached out to the county to invite county commissioners to that meeting and also to gather data from the county that we plan to include in that packet of materials as well.
And it's going to be a meeting that is an opportunity for dialogue and input and it isn't just, we're not inviting people to come watch us have a meeting. It is meant to be interactive.
It's meant to be interactive and we are working on ways to have that work best for everybody. As you know, it could take days, depending on the number of people in the room, for everyone to have an opportunity to stand up at a podium and speak. And so, it may not look like that, but our goal is, of course, for everyone to be able to hear from one another, talk with city officials, talk with staff, get questions answered, and also share input. So, we're conscious of what Mr. Damon mentioned and what you all mentioned to us yesterday about your goals for the meeting. And so, we're working on a format for that.
I also think that we said it at six-thirty in regard to some public comment, that we should have these types of meetings later. Traditionally, we've had them, I think, more like five, five-thirty. And so, I would be curious to hear back from the public if they like that time or if they prefer a different time.
And...
I mean, that's what it is for that meeting. I just mean for future meetings like this. What are their thoughts?
Yes. And during the comp plan process, we've experimented with meetings at different times, and this is another example of that. So, similarly, we're eager to hear back if this meeting time works well. And another way we're trying to facilitate people being able to attend this meeting is we'll have food there, too. So, it's not a full dinner, but if you've been to our comp plan meetings or the short-term rental meetings, you know that our staff puts together a really good spread of food. So, you can expect something similar to what we had at the short-term rental meetings because we know people sometimes come from work and we want them to be able to come to the meeting, have a snack, and stay engaged in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from youth council?
Yeah, actually, can I give my little report?
Please do.
So, um...
It's your turn.
December thirteenth, we had our first Rock the Rec of this term, and it was a huge success. We were expecting around twenty people and we had sixty-five people show up. So, it was really exciting and a huge win for our team. And we are working on planning for our next one, which is going to be in February. And then, we've also like really enjoyed having all the staff presentations from Bell, or Bill Bell and Ann and Jim Scheid. Like, it's been really great learning opportunity for all of us. And tomorrow, actually, we're hearing from Erica Weeks from Habitat for Humanity. And she's going to talk about like some volunteer opportunities and stuff like that. So, Ann, sorry, one more thing. We're also talking about like youth employment and we have a few ideas on how to get the youth more employed with the city. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
When you talked about youth employment, are you guys still going to do, is it the youth council that organizes kind of a job, an opportunity fair for summer things, jobs, internships, volunteer opportunities? Are you still working on something like that?
We're trying to like move away from that because it just hasn't been a huge success in the past years. But we're working on new ideas of how to engage the youth and like local businesses.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chief Hall?
You know, I just probably have two things. Reminder, tomorrow evening will be our Citizens' Police Academy kickoff for 2020. We have twenty-seven students. We're trying to make it a little bit more interactive this year. We'll have our citizens be able to drive our police cars on a track and process a crime scene and do some of the things that we do. And so, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And we'll kick off tomorrow night with a class on intelligence-led policing, the direction we're going in our police department, and then some patrol procedures. So, it should be a lot of fun.
And you're having a special session in Spanish.
We are. We're working on that right now. But on February twenty-second and February twenty-ninth, those are both Saturdays in the morning. I think we settled on the time from nine AM to one PM. We'll have a mini Spanish or Latino Citizens' Police Academy. And it's, we're just doing two days to start out with, just to see how it goes, and then we can expand from there. But we're really excited about that.
That's great. Thanks.
We're working with HAP and Ricardo Perez on that. So, it's going to be awesome.
Anything else from Jim?
No, I don't.
Counsel?
I'm exhausted. We've had a long day.
I'll second that.
I'd like to remind everybody that at this point, if you're interested in running for Montrose City Council, you can go and talk to Lisa Del Piccolo in the clerk's office. Starting today, you are able to pick up the official petition sheet, and that's part of what anybody needs that might want to run for council. We will have three seats open, Area Three, Area Four, and the at-large seat. And I hope we have great, great community turnout as candidates and to vote in the first Tuesday in April. So, we've had a lot of interest in social media and all over town, it seems like, about city government. We hope people get involved.
I'm going to go to adjourn.
We're out of here.